The February 18th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Prior to the start of each city council meeting, we give an opportunity to our residents to address the council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government. Typically, our meetings are held the first and third Tuesdays of each month, and the open podium period of time is from 6:30 to 6:55 in the council chambers. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office by noon of the meeting date at (949) 8412. Leave your name and your phone number in the issue you wish to discuss, and you'll be added to the agenda for open podium. If time permits, after scheduled speakers, we do open it up to anybody that is here that evening that wants to address the council at that time. These portions of the meeting are not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, again, please contact the city manager's office at (949) 8412. The first thing we have tonight is a resolution supporting participation in a program called "Open to Business." Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor Collin. So, we have, for two years, and now hopefully three, will be part of a program that we work jointly with the Metropolitan Consortium of Community Developers in Hennepin County, where the county and the city, several cities actually in Hennepin County, jointly fund an Open to Business program for the city to work with entrepreneurs in our community. So, tonight, we have both a presentation by the point person in this program, and then we ask that the council then take action of resolution to continue their support in the program. So, I believe Rob is here. Come on up, and Rob has a presentation for the council, and then we ask that you consider action on this program.
Great, thank you. Mayor, council members, I'm Rob Smolind. I work with MCCD for short, which is Metropolitan Consortium of Community Developers, and we have the Open to Business program. I'd like to just go real quickly over an overview of what the program is, talk about its background, talk about the services that we provide, go over the results in Eden Prairie, and then overall results. Okay? So, what is Open to Business? This is a unique program that we created that we thought could help municipalities extend their economic development efforts by offering free, direct consulting services and financing options to entrepreneurs. So, our services are two components. One is offering technical assistance, and that's intensive one-on-one counseling for entrepreneurs at any stage of their development. It could just be they have the idea, and they just don't know where to go. They can meet with me. It's free to the entrepreneur. I help them with stuff of challenging their assumptions, fleshing out their business plan, help them with the financial aspects. I mean, I've been doing this for a long time, and over 15 years and seeing over 3,500 entrepreneurs, the one thing that I knew I had to be good at is demystifying the financial management process of an entrepreneur. They don't want to touch that. Ninety-five percent of the people I meet, they don't want to have anything to do with the financial part. Just get my product to market. That's all I need to know. So, I really help them with that. Our financing, well, the overview of the program, we started, as Mr. Getchell said, in 2012 here. The program started first with the city of Brooklyn Park. We were just one city that contracted out with us. We are now up to 48 different communities. We're serving Scott County, Carver County, Dakota County, 18 cities in Hennepin County, Coon Rapids, and then North St. Paul. So, the concept is growing, and I think we provide a good service. Our financing programs, we bring capital to these communities where entrepreneurs can't get all the capital they may need from traditional bank financing. So, we have three or four different types of programs. One is our loans for new and emerging businesses that we can lend up to $25,000. These are loans where banks not involved. We use our own money. And then, second one is a bank participation, where a bank is involved, we can go a little bit higher than $25,000 if there's more of a capital need. These are for second-stage and maybe growing businesses. And we also have real estate participation loans. These could be for small commercial real estate purchases where maybe the appraisal comes back short, and there's a gap. We can fill that gap. Then, there's the real estate acquisition financing part, where we are that second part of the commercial. We're in that 90% loaned value. I don't get into the details of that, but we've had a few nice deals in other communities in that program there. The results in Eden Prairie for 2013, I worked with 14 different entrepreneurs. So far this year, I have to just say that the numbers, I've already worked with about six or seven in just the first month and a half, and it's been, the response has been nice. I've been doing some good work with folks there. We provided 70 hours of technical assistance. We did two loans. One was a $20,000 loan to an Eden Prairie resident who operated a business on the central corridor, and then I was able to facilitate a $1,000 micro grant for an existing Eden Prairie business. Overall, the program, and this is our own loan program, was pretty impressive in 2013. We did 47 direct loans, which was almost up to $1.5 million of direct capital, which leveraged another $14 million in equity and capital into these businesses. 261 jobs were created from these direct loans. Total volume was over $2.2 million, including funds that we administer on behalf of other community partners. So, I'd like to just end with a quote. We did, I did a survey of clients who used our services over, in 2013, and there was this one quote that I thought really captured the value that we can bring. "Open to Business provided me an invaluable forum to bounce my thinking off someone and obtain honest, unbiased feedback. The perspective and help I received was important. The advisor's input allowed me to explore and think through issues that will impact my business and its entire future." This is the part I like. "There is no price tag or value that can be attached to that. I thank you all for having the service available." So, really, in essence, what I try to do is become the entrepreneur's trusted advisor, bring a third-party objective view to their business idea.
Thank you, Mr. Smolind. Are there any questions? Kathy, Councilmember Nelson, rather.
Yes, last summer, I was talking to some immigrants that had been sort of studying how to set up their own small businesses and things, and, you know, they're struggling to figure out what they're going to want to do and everything. Do you mostly just do financing, or do you also help someone in that position where, you know, they're coming in and trying to figure out what they might be able to or want to do with that kind of business?
Oh, actually, it's the opposite. I mostly do technical assistance, okay? Such a small percentage of the people I work with actually go on to get financing. Those are the folks who I really want to address, you know? Help them with all the little nuts and bolts that, you know, it takes to open up a business, whether, helping them decide what kind of business structure they should have. How does, how to, you know, go to the Secretary of State and file a certificate of assumed name, you know? All these little details. I really like to get people at the beginning stages, before they sign the lease, before, you know, they make major commitments. But by all means, I do more work on that one-on-one consulting basis than just doing financing deals.
All right, thank you. Could you, Mr. Smolind, go over a little bit about who can use this service and also who is using this service?
Anybody can use it.
So, no requirements about...
Well, the requirement here in Eden Prairie is you need to be either a resident of Eden Prairie, or have a business in Eden Prairie, or think about opening up a business in Eden Prairie.
Okay.
And, you know, in the city, it's different in each city. So, in Eden Prairie, you know, there's a certain demographic that I've been seeing that I don't see in other cities. So, we're getting, I'm getting a nice mix of maybe existing, really small fledgling entrepreneurs with folks who are just in the planning process.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Aho.
So, I was just going to ask you, how many staff do you have? Is it just you, or is there...
Yeah, no, it's not just me. I do cover a lot of areas, but we have four other business advisors. We have one dedicated for Dakota County, full-time person there. We have somebody on contract to take care of Scott County. Our CFO takes care of Carver County, and we have two people working in Minneapolis.
So, you don't break it out into specialties, like, you know, someone is marketing, someone is finance, kind of the thing? It's more of a geographic?
It's both. We do. You know, so I become the big expert, if you can call that, on taprooms now, because I've been dealing with a lot of people who wanted to open up taprooms. So, if someone has a taproom entrepreneur in Scott County, they might, we might work together. We work very collaboratively, and so we, most of us, the majority really concentrate on the finance, but we now have, the person in Dakota County is a marketing expert. So, we really work as a team.
Okay, good. Now, one last question is, so the money that you loan out in direct loans to these groups, is that, where does that money come from?
We have a variety of sources. Some of it is our own net assets that we lend out, but we are an almighty of the Treasury Department. We're a CDFI, which is Certified Development Institute, so we get funds from there. We get funds from the state during, through the Urban Initiative Program. We have two EQ2 loans, or actually, three, from various banks, US Bank, Wells Fargo. Those are where we borrow money from them at a lower interest rate, and we lend it out at a higher interest rate. So, we're always looking for new capital sources, especially as we're expanding and we're getting bigger deals.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom.
Yeah, this is, hi.
Hi.
This is to kind of piggyback on Councilmember Nelson's, and that is, obviously, we've got these emerging entrepreneurs, and how do they find you?
They just, they can call me. I have an email address. I have brochures that I will leave here, that I have in the information booth there with my contact information. I think there's going to be a really nice, there's some good marketing ideas on how to get to people coming up this year, maybe some notes and utility bills. But if there's any ideas, you know, on how to reach out to a specific group, I'm all there to make a presentation, but, you know, and you feature it on your website very nicely, too.
Good. It's such a great resource that it seems to me we have folks who are very interested in it. We need to get you guys together. What were you going to say?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I was just going to add that we do quite a bit through our website, local newspaper. You're actually physically located here, where people can come here to city center to meet with you. But we were, we did come across an email, I think it was Dakota County, a few other counties, where they are establishing pretty close connections with their chambers of commerce.
Yeah.
So, that kind of reminded me that maybe we should make contact with Eden Prairie Chamber and see how we could help the chamber and the program can connect a little bit more as well.
And just to plug here, to reach out, I know, I hold office hours, not here anymore, but at the Dunn Brothers at 8107 Eden Prairie Road. It's the first Thursday from 1:00 to 3:00 o'clock. We found that there's more entrepreneurial activity at the Dunn Brothers, and I actually, I put up a sign. A lot of people come up to me and say, hey, what are you doing here?
That's really good. Wonderful, thank you. Wonderful program.
Oh, thank you.
One last question.
Great to hear about. Yeah, so I'm sorry.
In terms of, in terms of our value, I mean, the more people we can drive to you, I mean, it doesn't cost us any more to have more people use your services, right?
Yeah, it just puts more gray hair on me, but that's okay.
But it's a flat fee for the city, so I think it's up to us to, you know, encourage to people to use a great resource like that.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Maybe we should drive it over towards Prop a little bit, too, you know, because they are trying to get people back on their feet financially.
Yeah. Yeah, is Prop aware of you, your existence?
Prop, I'm not aware of Prop, so I don't think they're aware of me.
We should do that.
It's our local food shop, but they also work with clients that they have to help them get on their feet financially, so they might be very interested. Maybe we could drop some brochures off at Prop.
Yeah, just, one thing I do, I work with very self-motivated people. If you're going to run your own business, you really have to be motivated, and so...
They're motivated to find you, I'm sure.
That's great.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
Wait, we have to...
Oh, I'm sorry, we do need a motion.
I would move to adopt the resolution supporting the city's participation in the Open to Business program, committing to funding one-half of the cost, or $5,000.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to add? Mr. Getchell?
Uh, Mayor, no, there is not.
Okay. All in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, all right. Okay. Sherry does want to say something under Councilmember Rickström, so we'll just do that. No, we'll let her.
Come on, it's short.
Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held on Tuesday, January 21st?
Move approval.
Second. Any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. I'd like a motion for approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held that same evening.
So moved.
Second. Any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to poll for discussion?
Madam Mayor, if I could just point out that item E relates to the UHG project.
Okay.
Can we pull that? Have we already made the motion?
You could pull it at this point.
Okay.
Let's pull it.
Okay. So, is there, could we redo the motion, maybe?
You could just have a motion to approve everything but E, and then take E separately. That would be fine.
Who originally made the motion?
Did I do it? I think I did.
Yes.
So, I move to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item E.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of item E?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One abstention.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? I think I'd asked somewhere in the past. Canine is surplus property. I assume the dog goes to someplace appropriate.
Yes, Councilmember Nelson, actually, the dog is usually retired with their handler.
Oh.
So, then we would pursue another canine officer and canine dog.
But the dog is...
The dog will be healthy and happy.
Excellent.
I'm going to get them to change that.
That brings us to our public hearings, and we have public hearings on a number of Metropolitan Airport Commission parcels tonight, and I think that the first one is parcel two. But before we really get into that, I think we're going to have an explanation of how we got to this point from city staff. Mr. Getchell, do you want to get us started?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Collin. So, we do have six public hearings for six different parcels, but this is part of a process that began in 2010 with an MOU between MAC and the city. So, our city planner is going to provide a little history, because we are currently in the middle of that process to fulfill this review based on potential development. So, we'll have our city attorney provide a little history and an overview, and then we will take on each parcel, one by one, go through each parcel. MAC will be here to provide information on each parcel, hold each public hearing separately, and take action on each parcel separately.
Mr. Branson?
Your honor, members of the city council, there were two items identified in the MOU back in 2010. One was to establish a mutually agreeable review process. The other part was to develop regulations for guiding development for the development parcels at the airport. The three-step process started in September of 2012, where we had public hearings at the Planning Commission, eventually got to the city council, and that step involved amending the comprehensive guide plan to designate the airport commercial and airport office sites on the land use map as part of the airport property. The second part of that was regulations, creating the airport office and the airport commercial zoning district. That was finally approved by the city council in the first part of 2013. We started step two, which is the rezoning process. We were at the Planning Commission on the 24th of January, and the Planning Commission had recommended approval of all of the rezonings with some conditions, which I'll get into in a little bit later. The second part of that, second part of the process is the public hearing in front of the city council. And even though there are concept plans that are included in with your packet, we're not taking action on the concept plans. They simply represent a couple of ways in which the properties might develop in the future, because our actual review of the concept plans will happen at stage three, and that's going to be dependent upon when the market is ready to come forward with the developer, work out an agreement with MAC, at which that time, they'll go through our normal site plan process, and the neighbors and the commission and council through public hearings will have the opportunity to look at the architecture, the landscaping, the water quality ponds, transportation systems, the transition, all the normal performance standards that we do for every site that we develop within the city of Eden Prairie. With the rezoning for these parcels, the Planning Commission and the staff took a position on Site 2 and Site 6, which is different from the other parcels. These are the office sites. Site 2 is on the west end of the runway, and although the request from MAC was to rezone 39 acres, both the Planning Commission and city council recommended a smaller area of rezoning, about nine acres, and there were two primary reasons for doing that. One is we thought that size was a better fit next to residential, and secondly, that would allow for more of the site to be left in its natural condition, respecting the steep slopes, the trees, the wetlands, the flood plain, and the wetland areas that are on Site 2. We took a similar approach to Site 6, which is on the east end, and we recommended that you concentrate development kind of in the upper half of the property, and about 10 acres, that a compact development would leave more of the site left undisturbed in its natural setting, and would provide a better fit in relation to the neighborhood. The other sites, which are the commercial sites, do not have natural features that need to be protected or set aside. So, on all those parcels, both the commission and the planning staff recommended that the entire site be rezoned to commercial.
One question that I've had is, why are we doing this at all at this point, rather than waiting until an actual proposal comes before the rezoning is done?
This was one of the conditions in the MOU, that we're going to separate the site plan process from the rezoning process. It's not our normal way of doing business, but this was something that MAC had asked us to do. Even though it's kind of separated, I still think it gives us two opportunities to be at the table. You can debate the philosophy of the rezoning and how much to rezone first, and you still have the opportunity to come back through the site plan process, basically a second time for another look at the property. And one of the conditions that you'll find constant in all of the staff reports is that the site plans have to conform to the airport office and the airport commercial zoning regulations, as well as all the other performance standards that deal with transitions to surrounding properties.
So, are you saying that by going through the process, this process in this way, which is a little different than our usual method, that Metropolitan Airport Commission is willing to go along with all of our requirements for the way these buildings look, the way they're sited, the parking, all of that? Is that correct?
That's correct.
But could you also go into, and maybe it'd be for you or for Mr. Russell, talk a little bit about what legal ability we have to even say no on these parcels? If we say no, what happens?
I'll field that.
Okay.
And, Mayor, members of the council, when we started this process back in 2010, Metropolitan Airport's commission submitted a proposal for the memorandum of understanding, which I reviewed this morning, and it was a seven-point proposal that provided that MAC would seek input from the city and from the city staff, and would provide property owners notice of a proposed development and an opportunity to comment on it. They'd convene a public meeting and listen to comments about it, and then would incorporate the city's design standards to be in compliance with our standards, but the sole determination of whether they were in compliance or not would be their decision, not our decision, and that they would direct their developers to seek permits from us. And we met with them and told them that would not fly, that that was not a sufficient process, that we needed a process that was akin to the normal process that we go through with going before the Planning Commission with a public hearing, doing the guide plan change first, then going through zoning, getting a development. I explained the whole process of how we did things. They were willing to go through that process as a compromise to their proposal, and it didn't happen that quickly that we reached that agreement, but they were willing to do that as long as they could get zoning before they had to get a developer involved. And so, it was a negotiation. They wanted a very informal process where they were basically in charge and could make the decisions and listen to the input, and we wanted a public process, such as tonight's hearing, on all of the aspects. And so, what we gave up in order to get that process was that, unlike our typical development, where we don't rezone until we have the actual development, we're doing what most other cities do, which is that they have pre-zoned their community, and people come in and don't have to go through the zoning. They just have to submit, under the site plan, approval process. And so, that was a negotiation. The second part of, so that's how we got to this MOU, that it was a negotiation to, and frankly, and MAC is sitting here, I think we came out on the better end of that negotiation. The whole process looks a whole lot more like what we're accustomed to than what they would have preferred at the outset. But they were willing to go through that, because, you know, they're a part of the community as well, and they understood what the repercussions would be. So, your second question is, what are the repercussions? If we don't go through this process, if the council decides not to grant the rezoning, what right do we have to insist upon that?
And I don't mean all the rezonings. I mean, if we picked a couple that we weren't comfortable with.
Right. Well, let me back up then to 1992. We asked the Attorney General for an opinion on what the city's zoning authority was with respect to the airport, and I reviewed that opinion as well today. The Attorney General said that with respect to property that was put to aviation use, that we had no zoning authority. So, then the question becomes, is the property that they wish to use for development, that they will lease to private companies to generate revenue to support the airport, is that an aeronautical use of the property, or is that a non-aeronautical use? I have told this council, I take the position that that's a non-aeronautical use of the property. They have taken the position that it's an aeronautical use of the property, because it supports the financially and makes feasible the continued operation of their reliever airport systems. I think that, I've never talked to them about it, but I think they would view it the same as the mall at MSP. All those retail uses are there to make it a more attractive airport, but it also provides a substantial amount of revenue to them in order to support their operation, because they're totally supported by fees. So, if, I am quite convinced that if we had not gone through this process, that MAC would have told us, okay, we don't think you have the right to zone us in the first place, so we're going to do what we want to do with the properties, and if you see anything different, do what you need to do about it, because they take the opposite position. So, your question goes to, okay, so if there's one parcel or two parcels that you are having more trouble with than the others, my recommendation would be to take action tonight on those parcels that you can agree on the rezoning, and continue the hearing with respect to those other parcels, so that we can sit down with MAC and articulate what the issues are, and see if cooperatively we can resolve those.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody know whose light was first? Okay. Okay. Councilmember Wickstrom.
You answered my question.
Oh, I, okay.
You asked my question.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
I had a question about all these parcels, though I guess it's come up with one of them. Are they all out of the safety zone now, where they're, you know, not in a non-buildable part of the airport because of safety, or are some of them still covered by the safety zone, and it's being considered taking them out?
Site 2 and 6 are in the B-zone.
Okay.
The commercial sites are not within any zones at the airport, any of the safety zones.
There are safety zones, though, in terms of height restrictions, and so you have to look at the zones, and there's many different layers of zoning. So, you have... So you have safety zones, but then you also have zones where you can't build over a certain height. And so it's a pretty complicated picture. When we were, I serve on the joint Airport Zoning Board, the JASB board, and they actually had a kind of a model to show you what it looked like. And it's quite complex, a three-dimensional model, because it's, you can't just look at it and say, well, you know, there's the zoning in that particular area. It encompasses a lot of different features, both height and other restrictions, so.
I assume that anything that ultimately gets approved has to comply with those safety zones, though, otherwise. And obviously, we're not approving anything on any of these parcels tonight. That would all have to come back and be approved, and looked at, and looked at the terrain of the land, and where it makes sense, and where the safety parts are, and all of that. So, but in other words, those two parcels are a bit different than the other parcels, is what you're telling us. All right. Thanks.
Councilmember Case.
Mr. Russell, I think we all understand clearly the nuanced answer appropriate one that you gave, that this is complicated, and we have a long relationship with MAC, and we happen to be leasing extremely inexpensively really valuable parkland. The last thing we want is to be in some type of contentious, you know, arrangement with the MAC. What I'm, I want to push that a little bit in the large picture before we start to move through. I understand that if we're truly having some concerns and issues, which I think we do with one or two, let's put them on hold. But what I'd really like to kind of hear is, if we have the seat at the table, I want it to be more than just a seat at the table. So if we, in the end, have a difficult time with a particular zoning category, in a real zoning situation, we'd be able to say we're not comfortable with this as commercial, we're okay with it as, you know, a lesser zoning level, a less intense, and we would be able to do that. We would be able to justify that by the areas that are contiguous, or the impact on neighbors. I mean, we would have rationale that would be supported in court for why we don't think it should rise to the highest level of commercial or something. Do we have that freedom and flexibility as we walk down this road in this case?
I think the first question comes back a little bit before that, as to whether we have the zoning authority in the first place. If we have the zoning authority in the first place, then yes, we can use all the tools we have that we judge other developments by to say no, or this needs to be changed. If we don't have that, then they can do whatever they desire in terms of the development. So the process was designed to give us that seat at the table, and give us the tools that we normally have to help steer the development in the normal manner, so that we avoid both sides spending funds on litigating, frankly, who is correct on that issue. You know, we have not had discussions with the MAC staff about what happens if four of the six get approved and we have issues with the other two. That's why I was suggesting that perhaps the continuing, if there's a parcel or two that you have a problem with continuing that, so that we can have those discussions with them, so that they can hear what the council's concerns are, and that they have an opportunity to respond to that. Because I would think, again, without having talked to them, that like any developer, they're more interested in getting the development done than arguing about it and having a fight over it, because that just delays matters.
I guess I just want to state in final here, that everyone, people who are impacted by these potential developments to the Metropolitan Airport Commission, needs to clearly understand that all five of us represent the people of Eden Prairie. That means it's complicated. It means that we want to make sure that all contiguous neighbors' thoughts and fears and ideas are well represented. It also means we may want to try to keep the city out of court. I mean, it's all, as we're representing everybody, that's going to look a little bit different, but critical nonetheless. We're not, our interests, try to say this as respectfully as I can, is not to be, my personal interest is not to be concerned about Metropolitan Airport Commission and this airport. That being said, we have a good relationship with them. I want to keep that. I'm representing the people of Eden Prairie, and I want to, that's complicated, too. I want to make sure that people contiguous around these areas are well listened to, and they're my constituents. So are, you know, 65,000 people that may have to foot the bill if we get into court. So I mean, this is just a complicated issue, and we're all going to be carefully representing our constituents and people of Eden Prairie.
Okay. Thank you. There might be some additional questions that we have as we go along that kind of pertain to the kind of overall, how did we get here, and what can we do, what are our options here? But let's get started on each parcel. And the first one that we have is parcel number two. Mr. Getchow, do you want to choose that?
Yeah, sure. This, the first parcel, parcel two, actually, there, parcel one was taken off the table, so we go with two through seven. There were, at one time, seven. This is that easternmost parcel that we discussed, and as Mr. Franson said, was initially applied for to rezone the entire 39-acre parcel from rural to airport office. And the city staff and planning commission both recommended rezoning nine of the acres to airport office north of the line identified as runway 10L28R. So with that, I believe MAC will provide an overview of this parcel, and then staff is here for any questions, as well as MAC, and we would conduct the public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to, correction, we're starting west and heading east, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, councilmembers, thank you very much for having us here tonight. My name is Burget Reeve, R-I-E-F. I am the Director of Airport Development with the Metropolitan Airports Commission. We will go through each of the sites to whatever degree you desire. With your indulgence, I'd like to use the document cam.
Sure. Yeah. That'd be fine.
It does lie outside of the proposed.
Can you speak directly into the mic? We're not hearing you real well.
Yes, sir. Parcel number two lies directly west of the airfield. It is, sits between the conjunction of County State Aid Four and Eden Prairie Road. We looked at two different concepts for this particular parcel. This is one of the airport office parcels. We'd like to note that the majority of this site really isn't conducive to development. The creek runs through this parcel, there are bluff areas associated with this parcel. And so both of our concepts are focused on the north end of the site. The first one is a single-story office building. The proposed concept that we looked at would have the building tucked into the back of the hill, if you will, with the parking access off of Eden Prairie Road. Not very visible from the airport, it would be visible from Eden Prairie Road. The second concept is a four-story office building on the same development-size parcel. It would just be a larger building, a taller building, certainly wouldn't exceed any of the height restrictions around the airport. This concept, again, just a potential for what might happen here. We'd like to leave it up to a developer to make their decision about how much office space would actually be viable for this particular site. MAC is here tonight asking for rezoning from airport to airport office, and with that, we'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Reeve? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on parcel two? Have you, did you sign the form? We left a form out there. Is there one on the podium? If, before you leave, you could just write your name there, so we have it for the record.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Trisha Tyson. I'm a new resident to Eden Prairie, live just south of where the development is being proposed. And I'm wondering what the amount of additional traffic that will bring in, as there's about 200 homes currently being developed south of where that will be, and so traffic flow already could potentially be congested. Will there be a stoplight that will be developed? As it appears, on both diagrams, you're going to be having to turn onto Eden Prairie Road to access the building. So all traffic flow will be coming onto Eden Prairie Road and off on Eden Prairie Road.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Franson, are you going to, do you want to respond to that?
I think that as the plan were to develop, and you understand how many employees, or what type of use, what type of traffic you can generate, we would have a better method of answering that. At this point in time, it might be a little bit premature to determine if traffic signals were needed, left-turn lanes, right-turn lanes, deceleration lanes. I wouldn't be surprised if some amenities like that were necessary to feed some of the traffic, but I can't say with any level of confidence that a signal would be required or any other improvement. So it's still a little premature to make those determinations.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council? Thank you.
My name's Derek Abis, resident at 16101 Valley Road, which is just right across the street from this proposed development. And I guess I'd just like to talk a little bit about the safety zones. I know you mentioned that it was Safety Zone B that this is part of. According to the map that was initially in the guidebook, it's Safety Zone A, according to the state guidelines. And I guess, I'm just wondering where the JASB is in determining if we go to the state guidelines versus a less restrictive federal guidelines, or is this where we are in that process?
As I recall, and Mr. Russell, you could chime in on this. As I recall, it was the state, but is that, is that correct?
The JASB zones have not been adopted, so those are not what we're, what we have in play. The city, in accordance with the amendment to the comprehensive plan, adjusted A and B to conform to the federal zones, if I have that correct. And so A and B now conform to the federal RPZ zones. And at such time as if JASB ever goes into effect, those will likely remain the same, but that's the situation we're in right now.
Because I was under the understanding, per state law, that the JASB regulations had to either be accepted or denied by MDOT. And I talked to Deb Sorensen about this, and according to her, this has not happened yet. I believe it's 360.065 is the regulation that states that no further action can be completed until the state gives their ruling. That's all I had. Sir, thanks.
Okay. And could you make sure you've signed your name on that slip? Thanks.
If I could just respond to that, statute does have a provision that with respect to zoning, under Minnesota statutes 360, which is the JASB zoning chapter, that no additional actions can be taken under that chapter and that zoning until the zoning is approved by the Commissioner of Transportation. Commissioner has not approved the JASB ordinance at this time. There is also an express exception in the statute that says this doesn't impact zoning under any other sort of regulation. And we've analyzed that, and I have an opinion that I can provide to the city council in writing, that that provision on the zoning affects only zoning under 360. It does not affect the normal zoning we do under our comprehensive zoning ordinance. If it did, then we would be prohibited from rezoning more than half the city at this point, because Zone C of the JASB ordinance goes out a huge distance into the community. And so, again, a statute is not to be read in isolation, it has to be read in the context. And the language of this particular statute refers to zoning under Chapter 360. So I don't believe the council needs to be concerned that you're adopting anything in violation of that statute.
Okay. Anyone else from the audience? Okay. Oh, okay. All right.
Could you come up to the podium and put your name in? 9752 Cupola Lane. And I've been listening to you tonight, and the people at MAC that I know tell me they're going to do whatever they want to do with that parcel. They're going to try to cooperate with us, but if they want to put a four-unit office building on there, that's what they're going to do. And as far as the city goes, city council, we have no control on that. The only one that's brought this up the last couple meetings that have been at is then Mr. Case, who actually said, let's be a city council, and let's find out exactly what they want to do. Everybody else seems to want to put just a blanket on it, let them do what they want to do. That's what you want? If the city needs that, go ahead. But I don't believe everything that you've said tonight, okay?
Could you sign the public?
I think I did.
Oh, did you? Okay. Okay. Thank you so much.
I'll go check that, okay?
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, council? Do you want, somebody want to close the public hearing?
I'll close, move to close the public hearing at this time.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Discussion. Councilmember Case.
Yeah, just, I understand other cities do this pre-zoning, so I understand that piece of it. I just don't know enough yet about that process, because this isn't our way of doing it these last couple decades. And I don't feel comfortable tonight with the idea, this is just a proposal, you know, it's vague. And so if a developer came in, what are we saying that we're approving in concept? Is it the two exits, could an exit go off on Spring Road? Is it the square footage impact on that parcel? I know that there's 39 acres potential there, but that's a whole nother story. So I'm uncomfortable, it's almost like we're giving license to just come back and, you know, build. I mean, at that point, because MAC has the power, I mean, could they come back at whatever height guidelines there are, and come back and say, well, we said a four, but we really want a six, and you guys approved in advance a thing there, you know, a building, so here we are. So I'm going to be uncomfortable with all these tonight, but I'm particularly uncomfortable with the vagueness of this first one that's come up. So if I could get a little answer on what it means, what are we, what are we potentially doing here?
By my consent, madam mayor, members of the council, you're approving the zoning of the parcel, you're not approving anything with respect to the site plan. So if it was approved, and then they come back, whether it's next week or two years from now, with an actual proposal, that has to go through the site plan approval process, and under the MOU, has to meet our performance standards. So where the exits are from the property, whether Mr. Ellis's department determines that signalization is necessary, height, brick and glass, all of those performance standards are part of what is in the MOU. Now, can, just as you could decide tonight, no, at that point, MAC could decide, no. But the purpose of the exercise here is to continue to move forward on what both parties can say yes to, and they've agreed to be bound by the performance standards if we rezone the property in accordance with the requests.
So I understand that, and I appreciate the potential power that a future council, and likely it won't be any of us up here, possibly, whatever, who knows down the road, but a future council might have to deal with the pieces of this proposal down the road, which gives them a certain amount of power. What I'm concerned about is, we set in motion a precedent tonight that a future council suddenly has a project come back in, hey, we have now an office-zoned area. "Hey, we have now an office zoned area," and what is it, on nine acres or something? And they come back and they say they want, "This is 30,000 square feet." We have by your own ordinances, power potential to put 200,000 square feet in on that nine acres. And you've zoned it office, so at that point, have we just given up? Not, not, in some ways, we have no power. In other ways, we're being given or offered this chance to have a seat at the table. I'm just trying to get my hands around what table?
Well, if 200,000 square feet met the performance standard, then just like any other developer, they'd likely be entitled to it if they weren't asking for variances from any of our other standards. I don't think this supports that. I think the second proposal maximizes the site. Mr. Franzen can speak more definitively to that. But you are saying yes to the zoning, but the performance standards are still the subject of the site plan approval process.
I just feel like we may be giving some potential political power leverage to MAC in a future conflict with a future council that will then be able to use this precedent tonight to work against a future council. And I'm worried about that.
Councilmember, oh, Aho? No, Councilmember Exsterm.
Yep. Well, first of all, I do want to assure our residents that we are representatives of our citizens, just as Councilmember Case stated. And I think all of us here believe very strongly that. And we have heard from some residents, and that's what we're here to do, is to hear your concerns, address your concerns in every way that we can. So my sense is from this conversation and dialogue that we've had is that MAC is really wanting to hear a message from the council on these concepts and hear what we have heard, the feedback we have gotten from residents. And they want to hear from us. So I have to tell you that this is one of the plans that I am not, I am not comfortable with. And I would actually like to table this particular plan. And I'd like to give a couple of reasons why I'm not comfortable with it. One of them is the concept of the four stories. That's four-story building in that area is disconcerting. And then there is the question about the pipeline. And then there is a question about the safety zone. So from my perspective, those are the things that I have heard from residents that I would like to make a statement about. And I would like to personally see this proposal tabled.
For this parcel?
I'm sorry, parcel. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, I would agree. The two safety parcels are the ones that I sort of would like to see tabled. I can see that they've given some good thought on the one-story one built back against a hill where it's going to be not particularly visible. You know, it looks like you could even do two stories, maybe three. I'll admit the four stories is getting, it must just barely fit under the safety zone or something. And though I understand, you know, they've given some suggestions, that doesn't mean we're giving them the right to do those suggestions. But I think maybe we need to find some language that makes that a little clearer on these two parcels that, you know, we're not giving them specific permission to go certain heights and stuff. These two parcels seem different than the others to me. And so I would be comfortable tabling it with the purpose of coming to a little more conclusion about how we're handling these parcels that are also safety.
Mr. Russell, what's?
You know, so, but, but that would be my reasons, that, you know, we need to flesh this out a little bit more. These are different, and not only do we want these to look nice and function well and things, but to be something that the adjoining neighborhoods and everybody is more comfortable with. And to make sure that there's a full understanding that we're not agreeing to anything before we see the actual development potential, and that we really love when they're trying to keep these as invisible yet commercial as possible.
Are we moving to continue, and if so, do we need a date specific?
Mr. Getto and I were just discussing, you can move to continue it to a date certain. And you've already taken action to close the public hearing. So if you move to continue it to a date certain, then it will automatically come up at that time. If you move to table the matter, then it won't come back up until someone at this table makes a motion to take it off the table for renewed discussion. In either event, I would think that you would want to direct staff at that time to notice it as a public hearing. Because you, one, you shouldn't take additional testimony without it being part of the hearing. And two, you'll want to give people a renewed opportunity to comment on whatever may be different. And so to avoid the due process issues of taking testimony outside the public hearing, we'd want to do that. So either way works as long as we have time to renotice a hearing at whatever time you want to bring it back.
If we table it, Robert's rules of order, the person that tables in seconds would have to be one of the two that untable it, I think?
I believe that's correct.
I think that's important to recognize, just in case someone tables, that you would be responsible, I believe, to pull it.
I see a third possibility that I would like to make sure is feasible, because it's sort of what I would like to propose, is that this is continued, but instead of to a date certain, that it's continued until the discussion's finished.
I've just been advised that the 120-day review period ends April 18th. So. Right, April 8th. I read the L as a one, I'm sorry.
So if we don't act by that point, it automatically gets approved?
Right. Or they can grant us more time, but if we're having fruitful discussions, I'm.
Perhaps we need to do it a month from now.
So maybe the idea of continuing the discussion for a month to the second meeting in March.
Which is March 18th.
Oh, okay.
And then directing staff to notice that also as a public hearing so that people, again, have an opportunity to address the council, would be the best option.
Can I do that, then?
Well, Councilmember Aho had his light on.
What we, I think what we have to remember here, and we've kind of talked about it a lot, a little bit, and skirted around it maybe, is that we're not approving a specific project here. We're zoning it. And they've just given us some concepts to just kind of help us to understand what might, might become possible. They're not saying we are going to necessarily build a two-story or a four-story office building here. They're just saying, here are some possibilities that might take place if it's zoned such as what we're requesting. So as we've talked about, we still have the opportunity to approve any project that would come forward. So if they came forward with a four-story project, we could say, "No, that's too tall." We would, you know, we think it really should be two stories. And, and it would have to meet the safety zones and all of the requirements. So I think we're maybe getting a little bit too prescriptive and maybe a little bit too worried about the detail when the detail really doesn't exist yet. I don't think we're giving carte blanche approval to do anything that MAC wants to do there. They still have to go through the rest of the process. We're just zoning the land to a specific zoning type. We're not saying you can build this kind of office or that kind of office, or this height or that height. We're just saying that everything still has to meet all of our, all of our zoning, all of our, all of our planning requirements. Everything still applies. It still has to go through the full process. So I don't see that we're giving up anything by changing the zoning.
So my understanding is that if we, if we rezone this, we continue to try to work cooperatively with MAC. If we don't rezone it, because of the fact that they can really do whatever they want anyway, they could come in and put a gas station on these places that we're looking at tonight that are possibly office. Is that correct?
That would be correct if they have the right to move without our approval. And then the, the decision comes back to you, whether you tell me to take legal action to enforce our zoning ordinance against them.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Exsterm, did you want to speak again?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I acknowledge Councilmember Aho's perspective. But I, it is my sense that MAC needs to hear our comments about this. And I don't think it's premature, because we know that it's not a proposal, but it's our ability and our, I don't know, I guess it's our privilege to be able to let them know what our residents have said about it, and also what it is we think about it so that they might be able to modify it if they have that inclination.
I think you're absolutely right. I think we need to, we need to bring out what our residents have told us about these parcels and about these different, you know, areas, and I think that's, that's critical for them to hear that. I don't think that, you know, they're not coming to us with a, with a proposal. I mean, they're coming with, to us with a request to rezone it. But I think before they come to us with a request for a proposal of an actual development, then, I mean, we need to make known before that takes place what, you know, what our thoughts are, what we're hearing. I agree. I don't think that is, I don't think that's separate, separate from the zoning. I mean, or it is separate from the zoning. We can zone it and still tell them, you know, what we've heard, what we think.
All right. Councilmember Case.
This is good to have, this is good to have the conversation at this point because this is going to impact all six of these. So this is not, you know, wasted effort at all. I, I appreciate Councilmember Aho, what you're saying. I don't, I don't agree because you're making an assumption that the rules are the same in this game that we're playing, and they're not. In this environment where we don't have final ultimate zoning authority, it's a different ballgame. And so, yes, I want badly to trust MAC that they would honor our ability in the future to be at that table in a full-spectrum way that we would be in a normal zoning process. But I don't trust that environment. So what you're saying, I don't care about the specifics of two or four-story. I care very much about setting up a potential environment that will bite a future council and limit really their ability to adequately represent the people. So I don't agree with you that, that they're separate in that way. In a normal, a normal zoning process, absolutely. We're not in one. So I think this is very productive tonight, at least to have this conversation and in public and having MAC hear it. I like very much the idea of continuing this at least a month. It sounds like the tabling doesn't do what we need to do because of the 120 days, correct? So I would move that, if that's okay, that we continue to the March, I'm sorry, 17th, 18th, what was it?
Eighteenth.
March 18th meeting, contingent also on making sure that that public hearing gets reopened. I don't know if I'm making that motion correct.
That we reopen a public hearing at that time?
We, we will renotice the public hearing.
That would be my motion.
Second. Any further discussion?
I would like to, a little bit more discussion on that. So I guess my question is, I understand what you want to do, and I understand why. I guess my question is, what do we, what do we anticipate we'll, we will accomplish during that, during that tabling period? And who is going to do what? I think we haven't really made that clear to anyone, and I think that needs to be clear. And if we're going to do this, we need to make sure that everyone understands what everyone is going to be doing and what the responsibilities are and what the expectations are. And I haven't heard that, so. Since you made the motion, do you want to articulate that, Mr. Case?
Well, what, one of the things is, I would like, you know, right now, the, the motion has a point one and a point two in it. Point one is that it's only the portion of the property north of the line. And number two is site plan will confirm to all requirements of the city code. I want to, you know, in their own discussion, they've said that the four-story exceeds the height of the safety requirement. I want minimally there to be a number three worded properly that says it will conform to all the security, our airport height security and all those kinds of rules as well. And I don't want to try to write something like that on the fly.
Not security, but you mean safety?
Safety.
Yeah.
The safety one. And, because right now here, you know, they say it exceeds it. So this, to me, sends some mixed messages, that they can propose something that exceeds it, they can propose something that doesn't exceed it. I wanted to make sure that those safety requirements become a piece of this so that they're not exceeding safety requirements just to get a certain size in or something. That's the minimum I want to see them come back with as a number three and in proper language.
Well, I mean, something has to meet all the safety requirements or it can't be put forward. I mean, by definition, it has to meet those requirements. So, I mean, I understand what you're trying to do, but I think, you know, it's maybe being a little bit, that would be like saying everyone that comes to us that all of their, their things, their development plans have to meet our, our requirements, and by definition, they do.
We do give exemptions, but we can't exempt that.
Councilmember Case.
I would like to know from staff if this parcel came in as a normal and regular office zoning request. What are the maximums that go into that site? Are we at this, or is this somewhat squishy right now? And so from staff, if you were to say back, "We would expect on a parcel like this that with neighboring residential, that we would have a one-story, we would expect it would not be more than 20,000 square feet." We would expect, I want to know that, not just zone it office, somebody bring a project in. We're not going to have a lot of flexibility to say, "No, we'll get the color and the brick and the glass on, and that's about it." I'm not comfortable with that, so I really would like to have some definition to what we might want to do on this parcel if this was not the Metropolitan Airport Commission that we're dealing with.
Ms. Reeve, did you want to say something?
Madam Chair, councilmembers, thank you very much. Well, there's a lot to respond to. First of all, I want to clarify that the proposal that we put together for all of these parcels was done at the request of city staff. We didn't want to come in with a request that came across as too vague or too nebulous and something that the residents couldn't picture in their minds, at least to some degree, what it is we're proposing. And Councilmember Aho was very, very correct, and these are just potentials. We're not the developers, but we wanted to put some concepts down on paper. We work very closely with staff on what the potential setbacks would be, what transitional setbacks would be, in particular for parcel two and parcel six because of their proximity to the residents. So we could put something at least that accurately reflects what the city standards would require of us without the promise of this is what it's going to look like. And so in some ways, I, we're feeling a little stuck between a rock and a hard place because we want to give you some definition, some concept idea of what could happen here. But the truth of the matter is, is this isn't what might be proposed. The developer will come forward in the, in your typical site plan review process, as has been talked about tonight. We would never propose anything that impacts or exceeds our safety height requirements. The height requirement listed in the staff report relates to the city's height allowance. And so if a four-story office is requested from a developer, at least my read of this staff report is, is they would have to come and ask the council for a variance from your typical standards for that. It isn't an airport safety height that we would be exceeding by any means. We're the last ones that are going to come forward with a request that would do that or a request that doesn't abide by any airport safety, whether it's land use or height or any other security-related issue. With regard to the process, we're here tonight. We're, we're here to hear your concerns. We're here to listen to the residents again. This is meeting number five out of meeting number nine, potentially for each of these parcels. And so we would like to hear those concerns. The zoning between now and March 18th isn't going to change. The zoning between now and March 18th isn't going to change. Nothing's going to happen with regard to the Jazz Bee by then. We can address the pipeline issues very simply by saying we're not going to impact the pipeline. We have that same natural gas pipeline runs all along the northern edge of the airport. And we've worked with the pipeline company in the past. If we have pavement that happens to cross over it, we'll work with them within our easement document to accommodate that. But we're not looking to relocate it or anything like that. And then I think the last part is, again, just with regard to the process, I'm not sure what, what would change between tonight and one month from tonight. So I'm very interested in the answer to the question of who's responsible for doing what so we can identify that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wixstrom?
Yeah, I guess it was, and I don't know why I thought this, maybe you can help me, Rick, one of the Ricks. And that is, I thought after you heard what we had to say as we're representing our residents and our, also our many years of experience, that, that might provide you with some additional information about what a proposal might be as it would come forward in the future.
Yeah, Ms. Reeve, did you want to answer that?
Madam Chair, Councilmembers, the action that we're asking for tonight is the zoning of the parcel and has nothing to do with the actual site plan review. And so the, absolutely, the concerns and comments from both the council, the planning commission members, from the residents, we will definitely want to hear and work through as part of the site plan review. But as has been said, it's, it's a little premature right now for us because all we're asking for is the zoning. We're not asking for any approvals for anything else.
Mr. Rosso.
At the risk of just being too bold, I would say that the question that I hear the council asking, or at least the majority of the council, is if we go back and have discussions, I'm, I'm not convinced that nothing can happen in, in that month. And, and I think the question that's dying to be asked and, and I'll state it is, if we grant you the zoning, will you apply, will you comply with all of our performance standards, which include having to request a variance if your developer asks for something that's outside the variance? And if you don't get the variance, you'll still comply with the performance standards? I don't think, I'm not asking you to respond to that tonight, Ms. Reeve. It's, yeah, I think, but I think that's the, the question. You've heard the council's concern about this. And I think a discussion about that and bringing information back to the council, I could see when I'm asking the question that there were heads nodding yes, that's the question that I really want an answer to. And, and I think that deserves a more thorough discussion between the staffs unless you're prepared to make a statement to that tonight. But that's what I would anticipate between now and the next meeting.
But you're not expecting an answer tonight?
No, I don't want to, no, I'm, I'm not.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. Could we have that motion restated? It's been some time since we've been
Continue until March 18th, making sure that the public hearing component is available again, the open public hearing to take comment.
Okay, and there was a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess I would just, one last comment, I would just request that, you know, we, we follow up with this and that we have a plan going forward to come up with what we're going to do for, between this, this period between this meeting and the 18th so that, you know, we're not just sitting here nebulously. It has to, has to have some purpose and, and I think, I think Mr. Rosso, you know, gave us some direction there. And I think, I would say that we direct staff to, to work, work towards his suggestion.
With that being said, the elephant in the corner would be to get some kind of a written, it'd be nice to have a written response, even if it's vague, even if we can't do that. But to know, will MAC commit to abiding completely, like this was a completely normal zoning process, by various requests and denial of various requests? And if they can't, that's fine, tell us. Then we just, that, that, I just need to know as I go forward on all six of these, is this a bit, I don't mean to characterize as a game, but is it a bit of a game in that we're being asked to, to run some kind of fake defense for MAC here or something? And in truth, we're not going to have the power or control that we're, you know, being given the idea that we might. If that's the game we're playing, I want to know that. But if they're willing to state, you know, on record, they will abide by the city council's review process, like this is a normal project, that changes everything for me. Otherwise, I'm inclined possibly to vote against all these, just not knowing that I'm really helping the residents of Eden Prairie and the future council members that this will be thrown into their lap.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second and the motion passed. Mr. Rosso?
If I could make one other comment, in the MOU itself, it says, "If the city rezones each development parcel as set forth in Exhibit B, MAC agrees not to object to the city's assertion of its alleged zoning authority to the extent set forth in this MOU." The next paragraph, "If the development parcels are rezoned as identified in Exhibit B, the site plan and architectural design review process set forth in City Code 11.03 Subdivision 6 will be followed with respect to any specific development that is proposed to occur on a development parcel. An applicant may apply to the city for waiver, amendment, alteration. No site plan or architectural review or approval shall be required for an aeronautical use or an aeronautical project."
So it sounds to me like that's a little bit more of an assurance than a vague letter from MAC between now and March 18th.
Are you comfortable with that, that we would be able to have a variance request, deny it? The project would not then be able to be allowed to have that variance?
The, my only hesitation is that the agreement allows either party to terminate the agreement. So I think there's a need to have the conversation, I mean, to have the conversation we've set, that I've set forth. Do, do I believe that MAC intends to follow what is in this MOU? Yes, I do, because I've, I've seen through the process where they started and we didn't follow the process they wanted to. They didn't like the process we proposed and they wanted to have all the public hearings for the comprehensive plan, the zoning and the architectural design. They, they wanted to combine them so they didn't have to go through three public hearings. We told them, no, our, our council needs to go through the regular process. So they've continued to cooperate with us. So there's been nothing that they've demonstrated to me other than we want to develop these parcels and we want to do it in a way in which the, complies with the city's process. And we want to be able to find a way to do that, just like you, Mr. Rosso, want to be able to find a way to enforce your city's code. So I believe they will do that, but I think a little more conversation about this is, is appropriate.
Okay. All right. MAC Development Parcel Number Three.
Can I have a question for Mr. Rosso? If this conversation needs to take place, should we in truth continue all of these parcels on the subject that that is going to continue? Or should we only do part of them, the, the non-commercial ones?
I, I knew that question was going to be asked and I've been, I've been struggling with it. I think it's a political question. I think there are, I, I think you could certainly do that and there's legitimate reasons to say we want to take them all up together. On the other hand, if there are not concerns about those other parcels, I think it's a, a good step to take to show MAC that because these other parcels don't have the concerns that the two that you've identified do, that you want to continue to move forward and that's your show of good faith because they've been going through our process and this is part of our process. And so that's how I analyze the situation.
That's a good point. All right. Parcel Two, or Parcel Three. Mr. Getchell, where you going?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Just to mention that this is rezoning from rural and public to airport commercial on 3.04 acres near Pioneer Trail and Mitchell Road. So Bridget.
Madam Chair, Councilmembers, this particular parcel is located at the corner of Pioneer Trail and Mitchell Road. It represents what we believe is our best opportunity for development here at the airport. Again, we've looked at a couple of different development concepts for this particular site. Access to the parcel will come off of the newly constructed access to the athletic fields that are located on airport property. We have a retail concept and a convenience store concept. This first one is the convenience store concept, again, working with MAC staff, excuse me, with city staff on the setbacks and orientation of the structure, the overall look of the structure so that it would be reduced in impact to the residents across the street. We would certainly look for landscaping and other screening opportunities similar to other developments that you have here in the city to follow those needs. The second concept is retail only. Two separate structures. So from an overall standpoint, we did work with city staff on the improvements to Mitchell Road. And the site is served with sewer and water and is development ready. Staff is asking for, I apologize for disagreeing, but our, our request is to rezone it from airport to airport commercial. All of MAC property is zoned airport right now. Airport to airport commercial. And with that, we'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Reeve? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on Parcel Three? Okay. Council, discussion? Councilmember Nelson?
This one seems to make sense to me. You know, we've looked at it and we looked at the parks and everything else. And I'm willing to go forward with, with this one as, you know, as a good faith.
Councilmember Case.
So to get back to a, in a normal zoning situation, would we take issue with the gas station that would be coming in? And I realize it's not yet, but it's, by, by releasing this into commercial, it gets back to the, can we say no in the face of fully actualizing one's potential value to property? So we've pushed ahead of time on a no down at Dell in Pioneer Trail. There's a potential gas station on the other side of town down in Eden Prairie near Franlo that hasn't been built yet. So there are these sites that we're going to get zillions of neighbors out having great issue with that gas station. And in the face of that, we could, because you could still fully actualize that property, probably say no to those and we have to the Dell one. Can we and would we here? And do we have power to do that? Are we releasing again? I, I agree with you that this is a, this is definitely a commercial type property. I, I'm comfortable with that. I get that. As long as, again, it sounds like we have, or future council, authority to, at that point, out of, out of really helping to represent people kitty cornered and elsewhere, if we have that authority to say no to a gas station, but yes to commercially, you know, to commercially actualizing the value of this property, then I'm okay with this.
Councilmember Wixstrom?
Yep. This is one that I feel comfortable with for a couple of reasons. Over the years, we have heard that there is a deficit of gas stations in that area. I'm not saying that that would be the best use for it, but we have heard that. So I'd like to hear further, if that were what would come forward, I'd like to hear further from our residents. But I do think this is, makes a lot of sense for either one of these uses to at least do a deeper dive on. So this one I'm fine with.
Okay.
I am as well, and I'll make a mo, have we closed the public hearing?
No, we have not closed the public hearing.
Okay, I would do the, I would move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance for zoning district change from rural to, rural and public to airport commercial on 3.04 acres, subject to the following condition. Any site plan application will conform to all requirements of the city code.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. And again, I'm sure like all the other council members, I just have a lot of concerns about the way this site is going to look when it does develop. So I'm glad that MAC is willing to continue to go through a review process with us on it because it is, it is a little bit different than almost anything else in that it's the only commercial, I think, that we would have along Pioneer Trail, other than hangars. But, so it's kind of a unique.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Until Parcel Four.
Right, right, until Parcel Four if that happens. Okay, Parcel Four. Mr. Getchell?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a request to rezone from public to airport commercial on 4.53 acres located at Flying Cloud Airport near or at Staring Parkway. And with that, Ms. Reeve?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Councilmembers. Parcel Four would be accessed from the existing stoplight that allows access to the athletic fields, the older athletic fields located on airport property. We looked at two concepts, very similar to Parcel Three. In fact, the concepts are identical. One would be dual retail type structures. The other would be retail with a gas station, convenience store type of concept associated with it. Key for this particular parcel, at least with regard to the airport, is to, we would have to ensure that it is a, it is accessible by the public, but that the airport remains inaccessible by the general public. And we would accomplish that with fencing and landscaping and some other methods. So we would have FAA concerns, if you will, if we didn't do that. So that is part of the, the overall concept plan that we'd be looking at.
Any questions for Ms. Reeve? Councilmember Wixstrom, did you have your light on, Ms.? Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on Parcel Four? Okay. Councilmember Wixstrom?
Yes, I would just like to say for Parcel Four, I feel similarly to Parcel Three. I think this makes a lot of sense and I think either of those uses and whatever, in whatever form they might come forward for us to review them, I'm comfortable with this one.
Councilmember Case?
So as we all are, I think I'm treating each one of these as if it was a completely regular, normal zoning proposal down the road on a piece of property. So in this case, I'm probably more comfortable with this one than almost any, with the exception that there's just a little kitty corner impact with some residential area. And as this would come through the process, I would want to make sure screening and, and all kinds of, any potential negative impacts would be mitigated. So just to let people know that that, we would look at that down the way. But, but in terms of where this sits and its border contiguous by, this is a pretty clean type commercial project. If this came in not connected to the airport, we would probably give this serious consideration.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
Move to close the public hearing and approve first reading of the ordinance for zoning district change from public to airport commercial A-C on 4.53 acres, subject to the following condition. Any site plan application will conform to all requirements of the city code.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Parcel Number Five.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a request to zoning district change from public to airport commercial on .45 acres, very small site. It's our understanding that this is actually connected to the parcel seven request, which will also be a commercial request as well.
Okay, Ms. Reeve?
Madam Chair, Councilmembers, it is correct, the site is very small and not really conducive to development. We are, however, interested in the rezoning aspect so that it can be tied with parcel number seven utilized as a utilized as a drainage outlet or some other type of supporting development for parcel number seven. So we're asking for this one to also be airport commercial. With that, we'll stand for any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, is there a way that I can get a sense on exactly where this is? So I am familiar with the Barney addition property, but in the old Pioneer Trail, it looks like is there a larger?
Mr. Case. Mr. Case. It's right in front of the Super America sign, right off of the highway. Right off of, it's in the, it's in the northeast quadrant of the intersection of Flying Cloud Drive and Pioneer Trail. It almost looks like it's part of the Super America property.
So the reason it was contiguous to the Barney property is that they changed the footprint of Pioneer Trail. So it's when Pioneer Trail used to run, okay, I get this now. So I think Sherry was just concerned, the potential of a burial that was not found when they developed that one building site. But the belief is that it's somewhere on that Barney property. But obviously, we would confront and face that later. The anecdotal history as a seven-year-old girl, that we looked for that burial and didn't find it at the time, but we think it's there. Okay, I know where it is.
Ms. Reeve, could I just ask, given the shape of this property, and I'm just trying to think of how it could ever be useful, why does MAC even want to bother to have it rezoned?
Again, Madam Chair, our interest in having it tied as a commercial development parcel to parcel number seven. Without that, I suspect we might have issues with the council in being able to utilize it for drainage or other purposes, again, as a supporting function.
Okay, all right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on parcel five? Hearing done, council?
Hearing done. I would move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of ordinance for zoning district change from public to airport commercial on 0.45 acres, subject to the following condition. Any site plan application will conform to all requirements of the city code with the granting of a waiver or variance to the lot size requirement for the A-C zoning district.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Parcel number six, Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Parcel six is the other office parcel. That's a request to rezone from rural and R-113.5 to airport office on 20.02 acres. This is another parcel. I think the city planner noted earlier that the city staff and planning commission vote and recommendation was to only rezone approximately 10 of the acres, not 20, to the north of the line identified as runway 10L 28R. And the feeling there would be that, that, that concentrating the development on the northern 10 acres would fit in better with the neighborhood and would minimize any impacts on tree slopes, wetlands, floodplain and shoreland areas. So that, that's what's coming forward to you tonight.
Ms. Reeve?
Madam Chair and council members, I'd like to start with this topography graphic for this particular site on parcel six. Similar to parcel two, there is some area of this parcel that really is not conducive to development. The part that I'd like to point out is the existing wetland site and floodplain areas are located on the very southern portion of the parcel. We would not allow a developer to impact any of those areas. The FAA would not allow it either as part of the process that we go through. So I just want to put the, I just want to make sure that there's an understanding of that to begin with. Given the adjacency to residential with this particular parcel, again, we spent a lot of time with city staff looking at what the setbacks would be and what transitional setbacks would be for an office parcel located so close to residential. We looked at two different concepts. And it's really, it's really one concept and then an extension of that concept. So the northern portion of the site is conducive to development. Similar to parcel two, we can tuck in some buildings into the side of the hill. So from the residential side of the parcel wouldn't necessarily be seen. The concepts that we've looked at carry a very residential look and feel, so that they would fit in better, similar to some other developments within the city. The southern portion of the proposed concept does fit within the topography. It would require some additional grading. It would require some additional cost and somewhat significant cost to construct the road and parking for what a developer may or may not deem as being worth it, if you will, depending on what, what they think they can get out of office sites down at the bottom of the hill. So again, similar to other developments within the city, giving it sort of that residential hip roof feel, making it look like their houses, individual smaller offices instead of one big office building. We'll just give you an idea of what it is we're looking at for this particular parcel. Our expectation is because of the, because of the topography on the site, that there aren't a lot of options when it comes to developing. But we request the ability to be flexible and have the entire parcel available for a developer to make those determinations. With that, we'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Reeve?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Case.
I should know this, and I don't, I apologize, but the land to the west of this current parcel, so where you built the radio tower component for the airport bar. Is it called a VOR? A VOR? V-O-R. I knew that. The VOR. Is that too close to the runways? Is that why this, this particular contour exists where it does? Is that why you're not actualizing the land to the west of that?
Madam Chair and council members, the, the radar site that we established comes with a protective zone around it that extends out to 1,000 feet. And so the curve that you see for this particular parcel matches the 1,000-foot offset.
It's not the runway A-B, it's the VOR that's driving that line.
That is correct.
So it had that VOR which was placed there, it used to be in the center of the airport. I'm assuming there might have been some alternative locations where they chose what they thought was the best. But that particular location is driving, pushing this potential development toward these neighbors. So it's a choice MAC made to put the VOR there that's really, to me, shoehorning in some development right next to neighborhoods in our city.
Madam Chair and council members, that is correct to some degree. We do have the runway protection zones and potential future zone A that we would have to avoid with regard to where this particular parcel is located. The location of the VOR was selected because it really is the only site available in and around the airport without impacting property that MAC doesn't own. And just by way of information, this particular radar supports only one approach at the Flying Cloud Airport, but it supports 64 approaches at the International Airport. And were it not for that, we wouldn't even have the thing anymore.
Wouldn't have what?
So the VOR antenna that sits out there. But the fact of the matter is, the VOR is in place. We do need to abide by the FAA requirements for setbacks with regard to that and still be able to utilize our site with access and the property available.
Any other questions for the proponent? This is a public hearing. I suspect there are people that would like to address us. If you'd like to come up to the podium, please.
Thank you. I'm John Fedora, 9820 Tree Farm Road. And I think you may have received an email from me. I had a question about the safety zones and it's, we've had that discussion, but it's still not very clear. But I'm just going to let that sit for now. Everything you've discussed about parcel two is, applies to parcel six and then some. This parcel directly touches about 14 residential properties, and then there's about another five or six that are separated by a small piece of parkland. So this is, and by MAC's own admission, it's also not very desirable as far as development because there's very limited access from Pioneer Trail, and the, the topography is pretty ridiculous as well. So and I, and you've all very clearly articulated the difficult dance that we seem to be having with MAC as well in this process. I guess as a residence, you know, we just don't want to be harmed in this process. And we don't want our property values to be decreased by development. We don't want our quality of life diminished, and we don't want uncertainty. And so the process that we're going through as far as rezoning and then coming back maybe someday with a developer that says, yeah, I want to develop this ridiculous place for development, shoehorned in between these parameters, it just doesn't make sense to me. I, I guess I would be open to going through the normal process. You know, have, you know, let MAC develop the commercial properties that you've already rezoned. We will learn a lot in that process as they come forward with developments and how they work with the city. Same issues on parcel two. But let them develop all the other ones first. And as they said, they, you know, this is the least desirable property with the greatest negative impact to residents. Let's wait. Let's wait until there's a real developer with a real plan, and then let's talk zoning. That's the normal process. It, it makes no sense to zone it now because it puts us in a, in a huge uncertain area. Because today, if I wanted to sell my house, it's zoned rural, nothing's going to be built there. If we zone it for airport office, it's like, well, what's going to happen when and how? And so from that standpoint, it really impacts our life decisions. There's many residents that have been there 20 years. We've raised our families, empty nesters. We're at that point that says, do we read, put more money into our house? Do we stay or do we move? And uncertainty is the devil when it comes to those kind of decisions. And so that's what I would ask, is that we maybe use the same process of setting it to the next month, have some discussions with MAC. But I would, I would ask that we go through the normal process and that we would not have this parcel rezoned until we have a real development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fedora. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council? You had to make the glasses turn up, huh?
I was panicking. My wife left the room and she took the glasses. Dan Sheen, 9836 Tree Farm Road. We bought our house in 1994, and at that time, of course, we did our due diligence about the property behind us, and we were told it was safety zone B, never to be developed. So it'd be interesting if we could connect with the person that gave us that information at the city, because evidently that was, that was incorrect. The one thing that I wanted to point out was from a safety perspective. According to Google, Google, since August 12th, 2009, there have been five plane crashes at Flying Cloud Airport, which I believe all were in the safety zones with property damage, injuries and the loss of life. So it begs the question, why would we, why would we be shortening up these safety zones for the benefit of MAC to improve their property? So that's really the main things that I wanted to point out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Tim Connors, 9820 Tree Tree Farm Road. I haven't been engaged in this whole process. One of those guys that works a lot, so I apologize for being a little bit uninformed. I've actually learned a lot here tonight as a result of this conversation. Clearly, it, in the context of this conversation, it would seem that the residents are in a poor position to bargain, so to speak. It's good to hear that the MAC is open and willing to listen to the community. And so I guess I'm going to do two things here. One, try to get some thoughts out here that were prepared inside the family and then make some concluding comments. Inside the family, here's a set of comments that everybody wanted to bring to the council. Parcel six is the only parcel under consideration that directly abuts the residential property. They have several alternative parcels that are under consideration that don't abut that property. Prior to purchasing our homes, just as Dan had commented, I think all of us were under the understanding, whether right or wrong, that, you know, the property behind our homes was not going to be developed. That was part of the deal, in a sense, for us as we, as we got into our ownership. Since those two things are connected, of course, we're the ones that are most concerned and, and probably have the greatest to lose as a result of whatever decision gets made here tonight. Again, to reiterate the point around safety zones, you know, that all seems to make sense to us. Why we're compromising, I know it's caught up in terms of how the regulations are interpreted and such. And yet, a lot of us know there's been accidents and there's been things that have happened at the front end and the tail end of those runways, and it's unclear to us why an interpretation of those safety zones would include some more buildings. To be specific, I believe there was an accident on August 5th, 2013, most recently, a charter jet ran off the end of the runway. There was another incident, well, I won't go through all the incidents. You guys know that the incidents are out there. The MAC has indicated that parcel six is the least desirable to develop. So in a sense, we're on similar pages. It's the one that hurts the residents the most. It's the one that helps the MAC the least. And so in the context of a conversation where we're trying to cooperate, it seems like it's a parcel which should be considered carefully. And, let's see. Eden Prairie's been a, a great place to live. Eden Prairie has made every effort to maintain natural habitats. I thought that area was supposed to be a natural habitat until very recently, and admittedly, maybe I'd been asleep at the wheel. But that area, I snowshoe in, I walk through, and I enjoy the wildlife and what it brings along with it. And I think that would be compromised with the development. You know, it's clear to me, based on the interpretation I've heard here, particularly the help that Attorney Roscoe has provided here, that this is a balancing act for us. I have some hope that, based on some threads here around aviation use, commercial properties, I, you know, I'm a little bit confused as to how that could be meant to, to suggest that that area is open for development myself. Doesn't sound like aviation use. I'm sure whoever put that language together originally thought of the airport as an airport, not an airport plus a bunch of residential space. Be that as it may, I understand that we're in a position here where people need to kind of balance out a mixed set of objectives, and it's good to hear that you're trying to push forward an agenda that says we're going to respect what was said on some level. We're going to expect a cooperative approach to the future. A cooperative approach might reflect the fact that there are some potential losers here in the development of parcel six. We're here to We're here tonight. There's a bunch more of us that didn't come, maybe through resignation, but I'm sure as time goes on, we'll continue to voice their opinions. And that in combination with the fact that parcel six seems like the least valuable thing to develop, might put us in a position here where we can avoid conflict. So, there it goes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony and thank you for signing up. Anyone else? I thought I had seen somebody else back there that looked like they were interested in speaking.
My name is Robin Kleiner and I live on 9772 Tree Farm Road. So, once again, we are in parcel six with the residents making their opinion. Once again, when we moved in here, we came to the city and did our due diligence on asking questions because when we moved into this area, there was a big sign that also told us to beware of the dump. So, we asked about the dump. We were told by the city, it'll never open. We asked about the airport, it'll never expand. Six months after we moved in, we found ourselves sitting in city council meetings about the dump opening. So, what I really have to say is, I understand MAC owns these lands and I understand that they have the ability to do what they want with them. I would really very much like the city council to consider the residents and the residents that live up against this area. When we moved in, the city allowed these lots to be developed as residential. We were also told that nothing was ever going to be behind us. And now, we are working, trying to work with MAC to propose building on these lands. Once the building starts on these lots behind us, the lands behind us, our lots become just any other lot. They aren't as valuable as they are now. The reason is, we have all this land behind us that we have this view of nothing, lands that we can use. But once something starts to get built on there, it's just like any other residential lot, except now, we have buildings and the airport and the dump behind us. So, I guess I would very much like to encourage you to leave parcel six off of the development because it is so close to residential homes. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Sarah Sheen, 9836 Tree Farm Road. Thank you for having us here tonight and thank you for all of your efforts on behalf of the city and the community. That's really what I want to say. I think it'll be very simple and short, is how, looking at the ways in which this particular parcel, this particular development that sits right next to our homes, how does it affect our community? A community includes business. It includes schools. There's economic development, residential development. All of us who have spoken here tonight and as, as my neighbors have said, the many who aren't here representing our, our community, have moved into the neighborhood, raised families. Some of us are now at the point where we could foresee in the next 10 years that we might be moving on and those might be homes that then would be filled by the next generation of families who are going to inhabit and be residents of Eden Prairie. And I think it's just so important to think, I would like to ask the council to consider, how does this impact our whole community and all of the pieces that includes? They're, they're all important, but we, there is, there is a balance. And it's a difficult job sometimes to find that balance, but I really think that zoning this parcel commercial is, is something that I am strongly against. I just wanted to also mention that we have also made compromise on our part being in the flight path of the primary east-west runways with airplane activity over the top of our homes. But the trade-off has been that the, that the property that backs up, that we back up to is space that provides our neighborhood with some quiet and some tranquility that Eden Prairie does offer. And that's been a very special place to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sheen. Anyone else? Last call. Okay.
I would move we close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember Wickstrom.
Well, I think you probably all have an indication that I am not comfortable with parcel six. And this along with parcel two were the ones that I had so much difficulty with. And the reason is because I know that this parcel with the plan, and even though we're not going to necessarily go with this plan, but to develop in this area would cause huge heartburn for our residents and primarily because it will impact their views and it will have an impact on their wildlife, the natural habitat, all those things that were mentioned here. I can tell you, having been on this council for many, many, many years, I have heard from a lot of the neighbors in that area, we've heard about airport noise, which is a reality. We've heard about the landfill. And I have to say that even though those things have been, are a part of their everyday life, the reason that they chose to live there was because they had these beautiful views. And so, to locate this, a development in that area that would take away that thing that, that they value and cherish, given they have these other things that they deal with, I think would be very difficult. And so, this is one that I would like to act on, much like we did parcel two, and continue it to March 18th.
Okay. Councilmember Case, I believe you were next.
I would actually push back a little bit. I'd rather vote on this one than continue it because it gets back to Brad's point, which I think we justified on the first one. To me, I don't see any gain here and I'll share why in a moment. Nothing's forever and I know, we all know that, that even though government may in any given day and age promise something, the next generation sadly can change that. But I do think it's up to people in government at the moment to be aware of the perception of the pledges that took place in the past and be faithful to that because I think otherwise people lose faith and trust in government. So, even though in many, many cases, people say they did their due diligence, they went in and checked and that was always going to be open land, I believe that this time. I mean, we really thought that the airport land would stay open and airport land. I would have stated that and gone door-to-door and assured people that in the 90s because, because this scenario just wasn't on the radar. We just didn't see this coming and we believed that it would stay open. I also, again, looking at it from my rationale of what is it that allows me to vote for some of these tonight and not others? If this was not public land right now, airport land, if this was a privately owned piece of land coming in for this proposed development, would we ever permit, and I'm looking here, a four zoning separation between what's there contiguous along that line? Nancy, you and I, you were, the only time we ever voted different than each other in the 90s was when you were just, just rigid really, and I appreciate that. No, complimentary, that you will not break the trust and change zoning. I mean, zoning was sacred to you at the time. And for us to come in, right now, the, the houses that are on Tree Farm Road are zoned R1 13.5, so minimum lot size is of 13,500. If you look down the zoning, it then goes to one family 9,500, then it goes to multifamily on 6.7 units per acre, then it go, so three steps, then it goes to multifamily 17.4 units per acre, then it goes to office, four zoning levels down. We would never, out in the real world, put something that was four zoning levels contiguous next to whatever residential. We, on this property, we might go one, we might put zero lot line houses in, we might go two levels. I remember doing that occasionally where we'll do some high density residential or lighter high density. But to park an office or commercial next to residential, again, unless it had been zoned, and we've done that up by Home Depot, I mean, there are some areas we've done that where the zoning was in place. But I would not vote for this if this was not MAC and therefore, since it is MAC, I will not vote for this. Now, does that mean this land cannot be fully actualized? Then, again, using my analogy with the private property, yes, because the arrangement or the trust, the faith in government said this would not. So, I'm going to go back to, even though it wasn't written or it wasn't, maybe even a handshake, the concept that this was not going to be developed. They're shoehorning that in now and the VOR, had the VOR not been there, this could have been further west. So, for us as a council not to stand up for the neighbors that, I would even argue that they're impacted by the power line, the airport, the landfill, we need to, to raise the flag for these people. And I, I will not vote for any development on this parcel.
Okay. Councilmember Aho.
I have a question for Ms. Reeve. I think I know the answer, but I just want, I think this is a valid question that everyone needs to understand. Is the VOR movable? Would it be, would it be at all possible to move that to the, to the west and therefore reduce some of that, that crowding that we're seeing as a result of that radius?
Madam Chair, councilmembers, the VOR is, I would argue, not relocatable. It is sighted based on the proximity from the end of the runway, not based on proximity for how much property we have left over to develop. At some point in time, this type of technology may become obsolete. Excuse me, I think in some degrees it already is, but because it is tied so closely to the International Airport, it is here to stay for now. But I wouldn't acknowledge that it's movable.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'd like to have a question about, since you're proposing development next to residential, why is it you're not proposing residential development?
Madam Chair, councilmembers, while this site does lie in the potential future zone B, that would not allow for residential development. This type of development at this particular density would be allowed in the proposed future zone B.
I've got to say, just in the, you know, if you're trying to make sense of your development from your land, that this is so far from trafficked road to be able to have any kind of office that far back, especially when you're talking about proposing what looks sort of like office condos or, you know, strips and our offices, that it just doesn't even make sense in a development point of view. You try not to make development for things you're pretty sure are going to fail. It, yeah, I do want to at least look at this one. I've got, I've got to say that though I was happy with some of the other ones, this one realistically just doesn't make sense. And if it's such that, I take it their backyards are fine to have residential there, but, you know, a few feet over, it isn't within the safety zone, I do have a problem with this. You know, I even have a problem with putting people in offices all day long that's not deemed where somebody could live because they're almost living there. And this one seems to be so much into that safety zone more than parcel two does. And so, I'm trying to make sense about why this one is being brought in here, quite frankly. It's, it's different from all the others.
Madam Chair, councilmembers, if I may? With regard to the safety zone discussion, this parcel actually sits farther away from the ends of the runway and farther out in the potential future zone B than parcel two does at the other end of the runway. From a metropolitan council standpoint, they have differing guidelines for different types of development in and around airports. And that's based on land use and then, of course, noise contours and that kind of thing. The metropolitan guideline would tell you that there are areas that are not conducive, not recommended for residential development, but they're certainly more than feasible for whether it be commercial or office type or light industrial type of developments that happens all around airports all the time. In this particular case, the houses do sit outside of the potential future zone B, so they're not within that zone. This development, again, from an airport standpoint, we wouldn't recommend residential, but we don't see any reason why this particular parcel isn't conducive to some amount of development. There would be concerns from visibility, from access from Pioneer Trail. We have had two different marketing studies done for all of the parcels around the airport and both of those studies have given us an indication that this is a potential development site. And based on that, we are interested in moving forward with the zoning part of it so we can put an RFP on the street and solicit requests for development and see if there really is interest out there.
I at least would like to see this continued.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead and make a motion?
Sure, Ken. You said you'd want to.
Oh, I move to continue this parcel until March 18th.
And reopen.
And, yeah, exactly.
At that time.
Did you say it?
Okay.
And reopen.
Public hearing.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Can I speak to it?
Yes, of course. Discussion on the motion, Mr. Case.
Yeah, I, I guess I agree with Brad's original concern before is what's our purpose? Because I got what the purpose was. I think there was information we needed on the first one. I don't need any information on this one. I'm not understanding why we're continuing except to put off the inevitable. So, I, I would much prefer to send the direction back to MAC that, because I'm sensing we're not comfortable. So, I don't understand what we're going to gain by staying uncomfortable for one more month.
Yeah, I, I agree and it just prolongs. So, it just means that they have to come out to another public hearing. I don't, I don't think that there's information that's really going to change the way a lot of us feel about this.
So, I'm going to vote against this continuing, just to let people know that.
Any, any further discussion on this? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor of the motion, which was continuance until March 18th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So, it passes. All right. The last item here is parcel seven, I believe. Ms. Reeve?
Madam Chair, councilmembers, parcel seven sits at the intersection of Pioneer Trail and Flying Cloud Drive are fairly close to it, adjacent to the Super America site and across the entrance road from where parcel five sits over here. Given the size of this site, again, there is development potential. It just isn't as great as some of our other parcels that we've been looking at in providing access and parking. We've looked at basically a one-building concept and so, there really is only one concept that we've put together for this site. This particular graphic shows it as a, you know, potential pharmacy, CVS, Walgreens type of establishment. There are other types of standalone buildings, retail that it could be as well. With that, we'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Reeve? Hearing done. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this issue? Councilmember Case?
No, I.
Oh, you can make a motion?
It needs to probably close.
Oh, you can go ahead and close it, yeah, if you want discussion.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Discussion, council.
So, oh, sorry, am I on or?
Yep, you are. You are on.
Still on.
It's still on.
Have you considered it's still on? Again, maybe even more so than the one down across from the park. This one tends to make sense to me. And of course, I realize it's small. The only kind of sad issue is that we have all of the public gardens there. The only kind of sad issue is that we have all of the public gardens there. And my only thought would be, again, it's been out of the graciousness of MAC up to this point and they certainly have the rights to pull that back. It'd be great as a city to really work hard in our park system and find other areas for our residents that have been utilizing this because it's been a really nice amenity and I'd hate to see that go. But just in, in the sense of where this fits and the contiguous properties and does this fit here, absolutely.
Any other comments, councilor? Is there a motion?
I move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance for zoning district change from public to airport commercial on 3.17 acres, subject to the following conditions. Any site plan application will conform to all requirements of the city code.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The last public hearing is on the reading of an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 11 relating to districts, standards and off-street parking facilities for the airport commercial and airport office districts. Mr. Getchow.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Mr. Fransen can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, part of this is kind of going back to that step one process where you established these airport commercial and office districts. And in the case of this particular reading, we'd like to, you know, include standards and setbacks for off-street parking facilities, well, and lot sizes, dimensions, setbacks, height for issues related to parking in those airport districts. And the planning commission voted six zero to recommend approval of the amendment to the code at their January 13th meeting.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Getchow?
One of the questions that I have is when I looked at some of the specs here, the standards for off-street parking and space, one of the things I didn't see is birmingham. And I thought that we had some sort of regulations regarding birmingham.
Your honor, we do. We have a landscaping and screening section of part of Chapter 11 that requires the parking to be screened from all public roads and adjacent differing land uses.
Okay, so it, it's under that chapter?
Yes, it is.
On this list? Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to address the council on this first reading of, of an ordinance?
Hearing none, I would move that we close the public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance amending Chapter 11, Section 11.03, Subdivision 2, Tables 4 and 5, District Standards and Section 11.03, Subdivision 3, H.4, Parking Requirement Use.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Payment of Claims, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval, payment of claims is submitted.
Second.
Anything, a question there? Roll call, please. Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Terrell Lopez?
Aye. Thank you. Reports of councilmembers, Councilmember Wickstrom wanted to bring something up. It's just a quick comment. I had received a note from one of our residents who applauded the great efforts of our Public Works Director, Robert Ellis, and also the leadership of Rick Getchow and all around the wonderful efforts in a very difficult, difficult winter on snow plowing. So I wanted to pass that on to staff and let them know how much we appreciate your Herculean efforts in a year that has got everybody by the tail. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. All right, report to the city attorney, Mr. Russell.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, several meetings ago, we made a presentation with respect to e-cigarettes and various options that were available to the city and council directed us to bring back in more formal form options that you may consider. And so you have essentially five different options before you tonight. Some, more than one of the options can be adopted, some are if you adopt that, you wouldn't adopt one of the others. But let me just go through them in summary form and then stand for questions. The, the first option is a motion to prohibit smoking of e-cigarettes in locations that are currently subject to the city's smoke-free air ordinance that prohibits the smoking of tobacco. So in city buildings, city parks, city vehicles where more than one person uses the vehicle, those situations. The city's smoke-free ordinance was adopted before the state adopted the Clean Air Act and in some respects, those two overlap. But that's the, the first option, just to apply it to what the city's smoke-free air ordinance applies to. The second option, which is an alternative to the first, is to approve an ordinance that would add e-cigarettes to the prohibition of smoking in locations that are covered by not only the Smoke-Free Air Act, but the Minnesota Clean Air Act. So retail establishments, office buildings, et cetera. Any place where you cannot smoke a tobacco product, this ordinance would prohibit the smoking of an e-cigarette. The third option, which could be adopted in addition to either A or B, is to require licensing for the retail sale of e-cigarettes in the same manner as we require licensing of tobacco products. So it doesn't prohibit their use in any respect, it just requires that the establishment be licensed. Primarily, the purpose for licensing of cigarettes is to control their distribution to minors and the same would be true with respect to e-cigarettes. So those are the, the first three items are in the regulatory arena. And the next two items are more in the, are the moratorium arena. And so item D is a moratorium on retail sales and sampling of e-cigarettes. And you will notice in items A, B, and C that we're recommending approval of a first reading of each of those ordinances. In item D, we're recommending that if you move forward with a moratorium, that you adopt first and second reading. In this situation, it would be temporarily prohibiting the retail sale and sampling of e-cigarettes and related devices. There's a resolution that accompanies the moratorium then that directs staff to conduct a study to determine what kind of regulations may be necessary or desirable. Cities such as Hopkins have adopted such a moratorium, Ely, Hermantown have adopted those kinds of, this kind of, of moratorium. The last option is E, and that's a motion for a moratorium on hookah lounging, lounges and lounging. I think they do some of that too. Hookah lounges and e-cigarette lounges. And, you know, this has been an education for all of us in terms of what these are. Hookah lounges are the smoking of tobacco products. E-cigarette lounges are the smoking of the vapor kind of substances that I showed you at the last meeting and I'm not going to demonstrate. Communities such as Shakopee, Savage, Prior Lake, North Mankato, Edina have adopted something very similar, either a moratorium on hookah lounges or, for instance, in Savage's case, both, the hookah lounges and the e-cigarette lounges. And again, the idea being put a moratorium on those kinds of establishments so that you can determine what kinds of regulations may be desirable with respect to those establishments. You know that I represent other communities. Savage adopted that moratorium at its last meeting, I was not there, but the same kind of proposal was made to Prior Lake and they were bringing that back to them. They had concerns over what were the experiences in other communities that were the motivating factor for bringing this forward. And the community of Burnsville is very close to Prior Lake and Burnsville has had some significant issues with respect to hookah lounges in particular, late hours, routiness, lots of people outside the establishment, lots of calls because of activity around the establishment. Prior Lake council said, well, what would regulation do with respect to that? Why, why don't we have, why aren't there regulations that are in place? And the police in particular thought that additional regulations would be helpful in those situations. But it almost, it's almost a snowballing effect because as Shakopee adopted a moratorium, then Savage and Prior Lake got concerned that, okay, the activity's not going to go to Shakopee, it's going to go to Prior Lake. And Savage, whether, whether that activity then, if those communities adopt it, then comes this side of the river, I don't know. I don't think that's a basis for you making a decision. You want to make a decision about what's appropriate for Eden Prairie and the kinds of regulations you have. But those are, those are the options. If you, you wouldn't, you could adopt both moratoriums because they, one deals with retail sales, but for instance, if you adopted the motion to license retail sales, then, then I don't know that a moratorium on retail sales is, is appropriate.
How long are the moratoriums for typically?
We have them, the state law allows you to put them in place for a year and so that's the period of time that we've specified. It really depends on how long it takes staff within that period to bring back studies and recommendations for enactment of any additional legislation. The period can be extended for an additional six months. I, I don't foresee that happening unless there's such confusion at the state level and the federal level that the city might say, well, something's imminently going to happen at the state or federal level, so let's hold off another few months and study it further till we find out what those entities are doing.
We've been talking about this for a while and one of, one of the biggest concerns that I have and the thing that drives me to stay interested in this is the fact that we, as you pointed out at the last meeting, we don't really know what is in those e-cigarettes. But on the other hand, I feel like people should be able to buy them if they want to as long as their use doesn't involve somebody who's an unwilling accessory and, you know, is breathing in the fumes without them really wanting to. So I don't necessarily have a problem with the moratorium on, doing a moratorium on retail sales. I don't have an issue with that. But could we also, could, instead of that, could we do a moratorium on sampling of e-cigarettes? Because if you go into some establishment that happens to sell them and people are using them, then other people are being subjected to it. So you could divorce these two things, the moratorium on retail sales and the sampling of e-cigarettes? I guess that's the question I have.
I, I think the sec, the item E, the moratorium on hookah lounges and e-cigarette lounges, sampling would fall within the e-cigarette lounge. I mean, I don't know how you.
Well, you'd have to sample in a lounge, but you could also sample someplace else at the point of sale, couldn't you? Seems like they're two different things.
We could, we could vary the language on that to specify, let me just pull that one.
So Exhibit D, you could change that, just drop the retail sales out of it and then just leave the sampling in it?
Better pull the sampling into the next one.
That's true. Or, yeah, or, that's what I was asking, or incorporate the sampling into the next.
Into the hookah lounges and e-cigarette lounges.
But distinctly pull it out because to me, e-cigarette lounge sounds something like a hookah lounge or like a bar where you'd go and just hang around with people and smoke e-cigarettes.
Or just we want gas stations or companies to sell it or, or allowing it to be sampled on site.
Right.
Even if they're licensed, they could still allow them to be sampled right there.
Right. We would want to change Section 5 to incorporate the e-cigarette sampling that's in Section 5 of D.
Yes.
Which, which is really the last sentence, "In addition, there shall be no sampling of e-cigarettes in retail establishments."
Okay.
And so we, you could do that at the table, you could adopt item E with the addition of the last sentence from item D, Section 5.
Okay. Councilmember Case.
Since I brought it up, I've seen it front cover of a magazine and I've actually experienced it down on the, in Dallas in the airport in the train that moves between terminals. Someone lit up right, right with about 20 of us in the little train car and blew the, whatever, the mist into everybody's faces. And could do that evidently. I'm not sure actually, but I'm assuming so. I would like to move on this and get ahead of it. I think we're not alone. I think clearly health agencies are warning that, again, because we don't know what's in it. So I've gotten a little bit of pushback from some people in the medical health profession saying that it's a positive because it's helping people that are addicted to smoking. Fine, that's great. And you're home, outside when you're walking in your yard, that's great. We're not talking about that. We're talking about impacts on others. And that's the piece that I think we attempted early on even with our smoking ban discussions years ago. So I personally would favor the second one of, of the first two, the second one. And then I definitely favor, while you're saying that we don't need the license if we moratorium, or we do need the license, and then we'll actually skip to the maroon and then include the sampling in there. Is that what you're saying, Rick?
Um.
So I see three motions, I guess, is what I'm suggesting.
If you, if you don't do D, then C makes sense. C is the license for retail sale. You wouldn't do C if you did D, which was a moratorium on retail sales. But if you're thinking of B, C, and E with the modification of E to include sampling of e-cigarettes in addition to e-cigarette lounges, then those three are consistent with each other.
That's what I'm suggesting. I see how you're, we don't have those letters by them, but I get what you're doing. So the.
There are, the letters are up above, if you look at. The letters are in the description above.
And the annotated.
Yeah.
Oh.
Doesn't seem to be in mine, but I'm not, I'm not on screen.
Oh, here, no, these, see the.
Oh, up there. Okay, so, yes, so I would favor myself, I'm just suggesting here, B, C, and, and E modified with the sampling prohibition. Or, or it would be not prohibition, but moratorium.
Council, thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, that was exactly what I was going to suggest, was B, C, and modify the. I too have been around e-cigarettes and they are different from regular cigarettes, but have many of the same issues with them. And what makes sense for eliminating one to me makes sense for eliminating both in public places, people's homes, you know, are, are what they are. But I also can't see if, say, somebody's in a nursing home or something and sharing a room with someone, being subject to e-cigarettes there either, which gets back to your public places and the indoor clean air act. So, yeah, I, I could certainly see doing that and I don't really, I guess I don't even totally understand why hookah lounges are okay if they involve tobacco, but then I guess I obviously don't know exactly what a hookah is, so.
We want to float a few motions here.
Sure.
I'd like to put B then on the floor and we can debate or, you know, get on the floor and then talk about it.
Do you want to read it?
So, yeah, I will move to approve the first reading of an ordinance amending City Code, Section 9.42, adding e-cigarettes to the prohibitions against smoking in locations covered by the Eden Prairie Smoke-Free Air Ordinance of 2002 and the Minnesota Clean Indoor Air Act.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed. Do you want me to, Nick, put the next motion up?
I would move. I'm more of a libertarian that way.
I would. That's fine, we respect you.
I, I personally don't like cigarettes, I personally don't like e-cigarettes, but I think there's a lot less risk to, um, people that are in the area of, of someone using an e-cigarette. I've been in the area where someone's using an e-cigarette, and it didn't, didn't seem to bother me at all. I mean, it was pretty, pretty unobtrusive. I, I think, you know, I think maybe we're just, I'd like to wait and see what the state is going to do and see if the state, you know, that's why I think a moratorium is fine, because that gives us time to wait until, you know, this kind of, this issue comes to the forefront and more studies can be done, and it can be done, you know, in a wise manner. I just feel that we're maybe taking action a little bit before we know all the facts, and so I, that's why I'm opposing.
I would move to approve the first reading of an ordinance amending city code Section 5.35 to require a license for the retail sale of e-cigarettes.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, whoops.
Well, I'll just respond to Brad there a little bit. I, I, you know, in general, just to, um, pass laws and regulations, absolutely, I would become libertarian there, too. But when it comes to the health of people, and, and we don't know, that's the whole point, we don't know right now. And we do know that nicotine is in some of these, and so we, we don't know the other aspects, and we're not saying you can't smo- uh, smoke these out somewhere in your home or in your car or whatever, but we are saying, we're not going to take that chance to impact others. And if we find out in a year or two that it's absolutely perfectly safe, we can undo it the other way.
Yeah.
But in the meantime, we, if we find out the other side, we've allowed damage then to occur to kids, to babies, to, you know, so I, I, when it comes to health, my libertarian piece becomes what's best for me individually, you individually, others, and I, and I'm not libertarian anymore when it comes to my health and my family's health.
And I don't have a problem with licensing it.
Right.
I don't have a problem with licensing, licensing it, I think that's fine, you're not prohibiting it, you're just, you're just asking people to license it.
And I think, I think that's a, I think that's fine, because then you're, then you're having some regulation
which would allow it to not be sold to minors, because you, you get, it gives you an opportunity. So, from that perspective, I'm, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that.
All right, then we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there another motion in the moratorium?
Somebody else, I don't want to hog this.
Kathy, do you want to do?
Okay, though I must admit, I didn't write down the extra wording to add in to.
Just so you can, just give directions.
Okay, um, approve the first and, first reading, oh, first and second reading of an ordinance temporarily prohibiting all hookah lounges, e-cigarette lounges, and related lounges, and adopt the resolution approving publication of summary ordinances, and adopt the resolution authoring a study to determine what amendment to city codes are required to protect the public health, safety, and welfare and provide for sound planning with respect to all hookah lounges, e-cigarette lounges, and related lounges. And we have to per the language of the sampling from the previous one as previously stated by the city attorney.
Is there a second?
Is that clear enough?
Second.
And that, uh, amendment is the last sentence of Section 5 of Item D, which states, "In addition, there'll be no sam, there shall be no sampling of e-cigarettes in retail establishments." And then, in addition for the resolution that's part of this, um, we would add in the recitation of, "To deal effectively with hookah lounges, e-cigarette lounges, and related lounges, and e-cigarettes."
Do you, do you see that there might be any need to, to, um, really define what sampling is? I'm not, I mean, give it some thought when you.
Well, I mean, you're adopting first and second reading.
Well, that's true, that's true, there's no time for that on that.
No, the, um, the, the issue around sampling is the same issue around, uh, as, uh, sampling of cigarettes, and, and so we're going to use the same standard.
Can you open the container and show people the apparatus?
Yes.
Can you, are you allowed to put the liquid in there?
You could do that. You can't start the burner.
The person can't, you can't start the burner, okay, that would be a good step.
That's the last thing before they, oh, wow.
You could, you could actually, the, the, you could start the burner, you could, you can fire up the mechanism that starts heating it, it doesn't do anything until you inhale.
Okay, so the, can the, can the, can the store let the person just run outside with this thing and inhale outside? I mean, that seems to be saying that.
And sample right outside the door?
Likely. But because we're prohibiting the sampling in retail establishments, and we're not prohibiting.
They would still be on, they would still be on the same, on the same premises or the same property as the retail sales, so.
Well, maybe not, if it's a strip mall and they're out on the sidewalk, it's not the store's sidewalk. But you would have the Minnesota Indoor Clean Air Act where you'd have to be a certain distance from the facility.
So you'd have, you know, and in the middle of last week, you might not want to run out to the middle of the.
Sales will, yeah, okay. All right. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Oh, councilmember Case.
So this requires five votes.
Yes.
Uh, I'd kind of like to know if we're not going to get five votes, because then I think we ought to change this, and I understand why we'd want first and second tonight, um, because we want to send a message really quickly and get this activated. If somebody's not going to vote for this, then I would offer friendly amendment to get this changed back to approve the first reading.
If you let me talk, I think it'll be clear.
I'd love to, that's exactly what I'm asking for.
Councilmember Aho.
As I stated previously, I am not opposed to having a moratorium, because I think if we have a moratorium that gives us time to look at what's going to happen, I think it'll give the state time to, to come up with regulations, it'll have more time to study what are the effects, and so I, I do not oppose having a moratorium.
Okay.
I think we have all five of us, so we're safe.
I think we do, and it seems like the, the only difference is having that piece of information that says they're unsafe, whereas some of us are leaning towards the side of caring on the side that there's no information that they are safe, so we're going to go with protecting public health. Okay, so we've got a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes, is there any other business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.